So we'll call this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to order, and let the record reflect that all five commissioners are here, plus the sheriff. And at this point, then, I'd ask Commissioner Ingles to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
Thank you, sir. All right, at this point, we'll open this for a public comment. And public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down. Public comment is open. And when you sign in, if you print, that would be handy for the clerk, and state your name.
David Cola. At the last BLCC meeting, Commissioner Penzil said that it was inappropriate or wasn't my purview to require a hydrogeologic study for a plan coming before the county commission, before the planning commission. Well, you're correct in that. As a planning commissioner, it isn't my responsibility. But as an engineer, it's ethically my responsibility to bring up something that I see is wrong or potentially wrong when there's a problem. It's BLCC's responsibility to have the hydrogeologic study done for Douglas County, at least the stuff in the Carson River watershed. And until that's done, I think it's the commissioner's responsibility to put forth a moratorium on any new building permits until that study is done. Thank you.
I first wanted to commend the project that's coming for the first reading today. I have concerns about it, but they did listen to the public. I think most developers, knowing they possibly have three votes, do not pay much attention. And I think that they did a great job of addressing many of the concerns. But I do want to raise a few concerns now so that they might be considered before the second reading, and something you might ask questions about when you hear this reading. First of all, the secondary road from the development to Highway 88, the developer is responsible for the portion from the development to the paved area. However, there are two bridges on this route between the paved, one on the unpaved area and one on the paved area, and they are inadequate for large construction vehicles, or for that matter, large emergency vehicles or even recreational vehicles. This would be a true secondary road. It shouldn't just be a technicality. It should be a road that people can use, and a road that is functional for, one, for the construction of the project, which is clearly the best way for the construction vehicles to enter this project, and also just for when the project's built out for the use of people. And emergency vehicles, that's a safety concern. This bridge, particularly the one that ends the paved person, was never intended for this kind of use. I believe some kind of partnership should be entered into by the county and the developer to not only build the road, as the developers promised to build the road on the unpaved portion, but upgrade the rest of the road by the beginning of the second phase. This would take construction traffic off of Tillman and relieve a major concern for local residents. I just before coming here today went out and drove that road. And the part, and I urge you all to do that, and the part that says dip, take very seriously. That is an incredible dip. And this is a road that's not ready. The county portion is not ready to be a secondary access road, and it's going to require upgrading. The next concern is water. Whatever stories we hear about, you know, the water in the valley, the same cannot be said about the Rancho's. Wells are failing. There is arsenic contamination. The grid trustees are much more aware of this than they were when they provided the will serve for this project. Several members of the board have pledged to prioritize this issue. I was just at the meeting last night, and it came up, and it's a serious concern. The Rancho's is surrounded on the south and east by receiving area. This could literally double the population of the grid. Water concerns must be raised. I'd like this developer to commit to zero scape landscaping in both the residential lots and any common areas. Furthermore, I would like to urge a CCR to require all landscaping by future residents to be zero scape. When I can, I will remove my front lawn as a Rancho's resident to greatly reduce my own water use. Water, like any other resource, isn't unlimited and must be managed for the benefit of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, the pen doesn't work. I'll use my own.
Commissioners, Mark Gardner. While I appreciate the developers of the new Rancho Sierra project coming before you with a scaled-down project, I also come to you today with two issues concerning public safety. I concur with Mr. McCallum's analysis. When these bridges are only rated at six tons, which is 12,000 pounds, that would not even support a small motor vehicle, I mean, a small recreational vehicle, much less to say of the state and county firefighting equipment. So I would hope that you would address that before you approve that project in the next reading. Secondly, the development includes two roundabouts, and I spoke about this before the planning Our citizens still don't understand how to navigate a roundabout, as evidenced on Centerville and 88, where those traveling on 88 think that they, because they're on that road, have right of way, which is not true. I understand the developer may be amenable to changing these to four-way stops, and I would encourage that out of concerns of public safety. Thank you.
Must be the same pen I used last time, Ted Gaines. I appreciate Barry clarifying that investigation that I put in for was complete the last time after I got done talking. I got the same letter, Barry, I knew it was complete. I tried to stay and commend you, Barry, the last time, because you had mentioned about Riverside following codes and whatnot. I don't remember the exact statement, but I had an appointment and had to leave. Now, with that being said, we all know about the investigation I turned in to an investigator that Mr. Nelson, Mr. Walsh, and you, Barry, had authorized for waste fraud and abuse. He investigated this. He helped make this out. He did everything. So what happens to it? It says it's complete. We have an inspector that I talked to on a job, went to a job, no permit. Come back to me and says, "I know them, they're good guys, they'll get a permit." I always thought you got a permit before you started working. And if you don't, there's penalties that should go with that permit. But these happen to be a friend, so I don't know what happened there. I mentioned preferential treatments of hiring a person to the county inspector because his wife worked for the, not Patrick, but our previous county manager, over another inspector. Well, after they hired that person, they hired the county inspector. So that tells you, he must have been a pretty good inspector because he stayed here until he quit. Now, that same inspector that they get preferential treatment to has falsified documents. In this thing, it shows they're falsified. I got colored pictures, 12 by 17, that the work wasn't done, and they're pouring concrete. I, as a licensed contractor, have a big question about that. No other contractor should get that done. Now, did that inspector get reprimanded? Did he get talked to? He got a promotion. I have a problem with that as a licensed contractor. He is now the head of the building department. Let's see, the head of the building department on the same house that he falsified an inspection on, and I'll use his name, Mr. London Green's house, because he was an owner builder, now he's moved in to the head inspector. You people up there, like I said, are stewards. You represent the county. I'm not saying anything here that is wrong or illegal. I would like you to tell me, I'd like you guys to ask, you're entitled to a copy of all the things in here. You tell me what's wrong, because there's nothing wrong in here. But why is that man telling us what to do? Last week, an inspector turned a house down. He told that inspector, "Get back out there and finalize it." Now, this was one of the new inspectors there, but because of reprimands and whatnot, he went back. Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm here today for concern of our kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids' futures. Our country is under attack, from within and without, stealthily. Continuing from the last gardener, or last Commissioners' meeting, January, second public We have in our city councils, county commissions, states, and federal governments, a sustainable socialist invasion, revolution. Read the book Sustainable by Tom DeWes, copyright 2018. Americans cannot afford not to know what's in this book, especially if you own property. Your property rights are being taken, property values reduced, eventually your property taken. No all-ideal property, true ownership. It's mostly fee simple. You don't own your property, you pay taxes. All-ideal property, you don't. Read the book Fruit from a Poisonous Tree by Melvin Stamper, Your Trust, pages 63 to Tom DeWes, president of YouTube, AmericanPolicy.org. The sustainable invasion known as United Nations Agenda 21, Resilience Agenda 2030, smart growth now called New Urbanism, wildland, rural land projects, sustainable development, on and on, being impotimented in all civilizations in the world, specifically the United States of America Corporation, under the Roman law of Lex Fori of pledging to know the makeup of our governments, understand that they are illegal corporations, corporocracy for profits. YouTube, the SCIM CAFR, by creative accounting, expense accounts, retirement programs, benefits. CAFR, C-A-F-R. YouTube, the CAFR Swindle, the biggest game in town. YouTube, introduction to the CAFR, why you can't get ahead. YouTube, CAFR1.com, YouTube, CAFR1 homepage. The goal is to make profits for the owners of the corporation, which is not us, the public. Globalists get their cut. There's more involved than just councils, commission members. They are United Nations sanctioned, non-governmental organizations. Stakeholders, planners, goals and programs being forced on states, counties, cities, and towns by federal government agencies, and the United Nations sanctioned Nazi, non-governmental organizations. Partners, fascism, socialism. Fascism, socialism, wasn't that Nazi Germany? YouTube Operation Paperclip, To Know the Truth, and Operation Mockingbird, where the CIA has taken over the medias under the MI6 Crown of London. Continuing in the second public comment.
Commissioner Ingles, this is public comment.
We were in receipt of this communique from the Division of Environmental Protection from the state of Nevada about benzene showing up out there in Zephyr Cold Water. Kate, did you get, do you recall this?
I received the same letter, and that's the first I've heard of that.
The reason I ask is that, that's a petroleum distillate. How's it getting into the Zephyr Cold Water? And they're getting ready to start construction on that water system out there, updating it. Is this going to require some kind of scrubbers or something? Do you know, anybody have any idea?
That, it's a good question. I think, though, it's outside the purview of our agenda right now, and so we'll refer that to the county manager and have him prepare a report to us on that.
Okay.
Would that work? Okay. I think the same goes for Mr. Gaines and his accusations. And if he's got new accusations, then we'll have to refer those again to the audit committee. But they need to be in writing. And I don't know what packet he was holding up, but I know there was a complete investigation. Part of it we're not privy to, and I think maybe that could be addressed by the district attorney. But the point being, that if he's making accusations, we should run them to ground, and we should be alert to whatever the instances are he's pointing up so we can at least be informed. And refer to the right, the proper authority. So can you send him a letter saying that? I'm sure he left.
If I could just make a comment. You know, he did submit accusations to the Waste, Fraud, and Abuse hotline. We hired a private investigator that thoroughly investigated that over several weeks at great expense to the county and found no substantiation to his accusations. If he has further accusations, he's certainly welcome to report them to the Waste, Fraud, and Abuse hotline.
Thank you. Any further public comment on items? Then I'll close public comment at this point, and bring it back to the board for approval of the agenda.
I've moved to approve today's agenda.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, and a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries 5-0. And I would like to change the order that we're doing this. The Douglas County award presentations I'd like to make now, and then we'll go on to the Douglas County Liquor Board. Any objections on the board? Okay. So we have, for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of employee service awards to Anthony Field for 25 years of continuous service, and Mr. ... Are they clapping for you, sorry? Oh, for the sheriff, I'm sorry. And Mr. Scott Bachelor for 25 years of continuous service. Okay. We have no awards here, but the sheriff said that he wants to make the awards, so...
He's the boss, right?
He is the boss. He's carrying the gun. So, sheriff?
I just want to take a moment and thank these two guys for all the hard work and dedication they've put in over the years. Anthony actually started with the sheriff's office in 1989 as a reserve. He worked our boat program up at Tahoe in the summers while he was going to school, and then was hired full-time in '94.
Sounds good.
And then Mr. Batchelor, he's worked for 20 years. And kind of the neat thing for me is I've known both these guys pretty much my whole life. Scott, his dad, my dad, coached football and taught at the high school for years. His dad even spanked me in middle school. He was the principal. So I got in trouble every few times. So local, local kids like myself chose to stay here in Douglas County and work and raise their families, and I couldn't be prouder of them. Each one has worked in all three divisions of the sheriff's office. Anthony, as a deputy and investigator, now as a supervisor. Scott's one of our detectives, and they do outstanding work. Anthony's over our set team, which is an important unit within the sheriff's office, and they do a ton with stemming the flow of drugs and narcotics into the county, into our schools. And so he does a really good job with that. And they're all over, working odd hours, and usually he looks a little scruffier than he does today. But I'm very proud of them. They're both on the range staff, they've been on SWAT for quite a while. Anthony's been over on SWAT, and he still is on SWAT, for over 20 years. He's one of our team leaders. Has been a defensive tactics instructor for many years. They were both FTOs. These guys are why we're successful at the sheriff's office. They really are. It's guys like this. And the fact that, I'm just glad that they're sticking around. I don't know what your plans are, but don't go anywhere. And Anthony's wife is here today, and I'd like to thank her for letting us have him as much as we do. And it's tough being the spouse of a cop sometimes, and so we appreciate you and all your support. And thanks a lot, guys. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have to get pictures, otherwise I'll be in picture.
No, no. Yeah. And you should come up, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Without you, he couldn't be getting this.
We do all three of you first, and we'll do one individual, and then maybe...
Two of each.
Okay. Okay. Ready? One, two, three. Good? Okay.
Go. You're here, go.
And now the sheriff.
Oh.
All right. One, two, three.
Just Heather.
Yeah.
What's wrong with the green over here?
All right, thank you.
I think, as you look at those three gentlemen, including the sheriff, you have to walk out of here saying, what a great sheriff's department we have. And not only are the statistics good, but the people are just wonderful. So I personally would like to add my thanks to what they've done, and feel free to clap at that. I think they've done a great job. The next, the next presentation we have is a proclamation. And Mr. Pullman, if you'll come up. Annually, we do this for the Carrot Shrine, and Mr. Pullman alerts us to this. And so, without any further ado, I'll read this Burn Awareness Week, and then you can speak. I know you're unfamiliar with that speaking part, right? It's proclamation 2020P-019 by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners declaring February 2 through 8, 2020, as Burn Awareness Week in Douglas County, Nevada. Whereas severe burns are a major cause of deaths and injuries, especially among young children, whereas every year, hundreds of children under the age 10 die in home fires. Whereas a high percentage of related deaths occur in homes, and fires and burns are a leading cause of injury-related fatalities among children under age 15. Whereas hundreds of children are taken to emergency room every day with burn injuries, whereas Shriners International supports four Shriners hospitals for children providing pediatric burn care. Whereas Shriners International and Shriners hospitals of children join with others in burn care field in recognizing the seriousness of this problem and the urgent need to educate the public about prevention. Whereas it is fitting and appropriate to acknowledge the contributions of Shriners International and to commend the Shriners for their continued support and care for children with burn injuries. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that proclaim the week of February 2 through 8, 2020, as Burn Awareness Week in Douglas County, Nevada, and do encourage all of our citizens to visit beburnaware.org and take appropriate precautions to protect their families from devastating burn injuries. Adopted this sixth day of February 2020, Board of County Commissioners, Barry Penzil, Chairman. Thank you, sir, for all that you do. Michael Henry.
Shrine started in about 1925 to build hospitals for orthopedics, and in 1962, we took on the task of burns. We have four burn hospitals in the United States, one in Sacramento, one in Galveston, Texas, one in Cincinnati, and one in Boston. These hospitals do take not only children here in the United States, but we also take in cases from overseas. So I'd like at this time to tell you that, over the last 20 years working with Shrine, that I've had been able to help three families in this area. One was a case where a young girl dumped boiling water down the front of her, and I was asked to take her to the local hospital, which I did. And they immediately asked me, knowing that Shrine could take care of the case better, asked me if I could please drive her to Sacramento, which I did. We've had cases, a young lad down in Topaz took his mother's ironing board and shook it, and the iron came down and burned his face. In that case, we had to take him to the hospital probably seven times for different operations over his youth. And it really wasn't completed until he was about 16 years old, but it really changed his life. And the last one, which was the worst, was a couple of boys playing with inflammable fuels down in the Topaz area and were severely burned and had to be air flight, helicopter flighted to the hospital, which we do for this area. Actually, the Sacramento Hospital's probably the closest burn hospital for our area. We also work extensively with UC Davis Hospital, which is next door to the Shrine in Sacramento. In fact, this, last year when we had the Paradise Fire, there were so many adults that were burned that the Shrine Hospital took some of the men on a temporary basis until they all could be stabilized. So I just want you to know that. What we do here locally is, we have booklets that we work with educators in the school district and daycares and that. We have one that's for children from three to seven, and another one for eight to 12. And these are booklets that the educator can work with them, and it's got little puzzles, little quizzes so the kids can see that they have the right items. So that's about it. It really, we really do this all year round. We just usually kick it off at the beginning of February, but it's really a year-round job of...
to convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. Douglas County Liquor Board, item one for possible action. Discussion to approve the name change from Cottonwood Spirits LLC DBA Cottonwood Spirits to Cottonwood Events LLC DBA Cottonwood Events and the addition of Mrs. April Beth Hayman on the existing onsite unrestricted retail and unrestricted caterers liquor license. Ms. April Hayman has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Captain McChurian, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Ron McChurian for Douglas County. This applicant has completed the required paperwork, paid the required fees, and the sheriff's office is not in objection to this name change.
Commissioner Nelson.
I would like to start it off with this comment before we got into the items, however. I am concerned that I think in the past, we have put the location of these, of the bars and stuff into the, just to the agenda. And I noticed this time, there's no addresses in the agenda for any of the addresses. And I think a lot of people ask for the agenda in order to know where things are located. And so I'd like to make sure we get the addresses once again back into the agendas so people, when they're reading the agenda, can drive by and see where it is or whatever. The second concern I have is we've got six licenses coming in and some of them are all for Dottie's. And I want to make sure that we're not opening the door here. If you have one location, but you have three different bars located at that one location, you can have 15 possible machines for each bar. I think that we want to make sure that the number of machines allowed is 15 total, regardless of how many different bars they name, under that roof. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Right. And the next ones are going to be these things that, that Commissioner Nelson is referring to. And I don't think we have a clear picture of what this is and how it's working. And we're hoping that perhaps you can paint the picture larger for us so we see, they all have the same address, 1601. And is it going to be four different operations in that same building, all with 15 slot machines, which I think is where Commissioner Nelson is going with that? Can you answer that question?
I believe I can.
Well, let me, let me read them into the, the thing. First, we have to vote on the first one. So I, I was just trying to ask that question so we can get on to this thing. Okay. So the first one is, I go back to, yeah, to Cottonwood Spirits. So do we have a motion on that or do we have more, more discussion? Okay.
Captain McChurian, can you tell us the, the address of this particular?
Yes, sir. It's 202 Genoa Lane, Genoa, Nevada.
It's the, it's the one that's been there for a long time. Used to be the chicken coop. And it is in the background.
Yeah. Really? Okay. Thank you.
And any other questions on this? Then I'll open this to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would recommend approval, the name change from Cottonwood Spirits LLC DBA to Cottonwood Spirits to Cottonwood Events LLC DBA Cottonwood Events and the addition of Mrs. April Beth Hayman to the existing onsite unrestricted retail and unrestricted caterers liquor license as presented.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any ayes? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. For those that are not familiar with this, the sheriff is a part of the liquor board. So we'll move on to item two for possible action. Discussion to approve the onsite package retail liquor beer and wine liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Dottie's number 171 pending issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Dottie's number 171 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey, who have both signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Captain McChurian.
Yes, again, this applicant has completed all the required paperwork, paid the required fees, and we are not in objection. Would you like me to answer your question?
Yes, sir.
If you would. I had the same question when I saw four of these come across my desk. My understanding is this is in a strip mall. The strip mall was designed that these were four separate units to be rented out. They're renting all four together as one unit. So per the code, it requires them to have a separate license for each location. It is also my understanding that it was the total of 15 machines total. However, I would like to confirm that before, I don't know if there's a way to confirm it right now or not.
Okay. Do you want to bring this item back then?
I could probably handle it by making a quick phone call.
We'll take a five-minute recess and you can make your phone call.
Thank you.
You get only one phone call, right? We'll bring this meeting back to order, reconvening the liquor board. Let the record reflect that all six liquor board members are here. And we were asking about the number of slots. And sir, do you have an answer?
We have some clarification. I met in the hallway with Mr. Barnes and this gentleman and a couple of other people. It does look like there are two locations. One is south of town in Gardinerville. And then there's three locations in the old Michael Hole dealership. And they are three, four separate licenses and they are looking at separate slots for each license. However, this is the liquor license. They'd have to go through gaming control for the, the slot licenses. And if you'd like to speak and explain that further, if you may.
Well, I would ask to kind of concentrate on this because it says beer, wine, liquor, and restricted gaming license in the item.
Chairman? So the sheriff's office or the county, we grant the licenses for the liquor license and then we're the first part of a gaming license. And so in order for the state to issue their part of the gaming license, it has to go through the county first. So in other words, if they don't hurdle the county process, then they're not going to get one from the state. So, but they, they, there's two steps and we're just the first in that. So we are part of the gaming, but not, not the complete part.
And you act for the county in recommending approval of the gaming license? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Delair, is there any additional requirement that you're putting on them as, as also a representative of the county?
Yeah. Tom Delair, Community Development Director for the record. The application came in some time ago. Community Development put in, put a condition on there to have three separate units that the, to break the one building into three separate entities. They have their own front door. It is going to still be one structure. They're planning on doing some improvements to the facade, adding of course the main entry doors and signs. And then each facility, each unit is going to be standalone. And so there won't be access like a community restroom where everybody's going through the back door from bar to bar or whatever and, and into the bathrooms there. Those bathrooms will be separate, individual, contained within each of the units.
And each of the unit will, each of the units will contain a maximum of 15?
Right. That was, I think that their, their plan and their layout indicated that they had, they had at each bar, each facility, they're three different entities. The restaurants were going to be themed, is my understanding. They're similar to what they have done in the Rayleigh's Shopping Center in Carson City. There's three bars on the north end of that off of Kunst there. And those three bars are owned and operated individually, like there's a similar model that they were, they propose here.
And to conform to our requirement, the restaurant will, each one will have a restaurant open 24 hours?
If they're open, yeah. And that it's a small cooking area. I, you know, it's not a big, large, like a, you know, a larger restaurant per se, like Chili's or something like that, but it does have a small kitchen area that will serve some food to those who, patrons.
So there'll be a maximum of 45 slot machines there?
Right. Potentially.
Engineer had to do the math?
I had to. Yes, actually, I just checked it.
All right. Well, at least I did it right, eh? All right. Okay. Commissioner Nelson, do you have any further questions?
No questions. No. Not on that issue. Made it pretty clear what we're getting into here.
Any other questions from any commissioners? Okay, so this first one that we're on is, is for number 171. And that's, that's the location that's at the, no, I think that's the one that's down at Walmart, right? The strip mall by Walmart?
My understanding is number two, three, and five. Numbers 170, 171, and 172 are the Michael Hole location.
Yeah.
Well, number 194, number four on the agenda, is the South Gardinerville location.
Then this, what, what are we doing with number two that's different from the others?
So number two is one of the three locations at Michael Hole.
Now I got it. It's 171 and 170, 172 and 194. Okay. Is that correct? I mean, I mean, those are the total numbers that we're dealing with.
Yes. Four separate locations. 170, well, in order, number two is 171, number three is 170, number four is 194, and number five is 172.
Yeah, right. And we, we're going to do each one individually. Okay. Sure. And when I was reading this in the background, they had all the same address. It's kind of a little confusing. Through no fault of anybody's, it just, I wasn't tracking it well. All right. So this is on item number two, Dottie's number 171. No further questions? I'll open this to public comment. Or did you have a comment, Mr. Delair? Okay. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? We have to have an up or down decision here, gentlemen. Sheriff, do you want to make a?
I'll make a motion to approve the onsite package retail liquor beer, wine, liquor, and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Dottie's number 171 pending the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Dottie's 171 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey.
So we have a motion by the sheriff and a second by Commissioner Ingalls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it and motion carries 6-0. So we'll move on to item number three for possible action. Discussion to approve the onsite beer and wine liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar number 170 pending issuance of certificate of occupancy. Bourbon Street Sports Bar 170 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey, who have both signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Captain McChurian.
Again, this applicant has completed the required paperwork, has paid the fees, and the sheriff's office is not in objection. This would be location number two at the Michael Hole building.
And any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll, are you waiting to make a comment? Okay. I'll open this for public comment. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And it's my understanding that each one of these is paying a $900 fee to the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then they will, on top of that, pay per machine? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Not a lot of money, but anyway, any questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board? Since I opened this and closed public comment. Sheriff?
I'll make a motion to approve the onsite beer and wine liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar 170 pending issuance of certificate of occupancy. Bourbon Street Sports Bar 170 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey.
So we have a motion by, the sheriff, a second by Commissioner Ingalls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No ayes, the motion carries 6-0. Move on. Item number three. Say again?
That was three.
No, I'm sorry. Four. Possible discussion to approve the onsite beer and wine liquor package retail liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Dottie's number 194 pending, pending issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Dottie's number 194 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey, who have both signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Captain McChurian.
And again, this applicant has completed the required paperwork, paid the fees, and the sheriff's office is not in objection. For the record, the address of this location is 1124 Supercenter Lane in Gardinerville. This is unrelated to the Michael Hole location.
Right. All right. Questions? Commissioner Nelson?
Are we looking at more than 15 slots at this location?
My understanding is no. One, one store, 15 slot machines. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions from the board? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the onsite beer and wine liquor package retail liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Dottie's 194 pending issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Dottie's 194 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey.
So a motion by the sheriff, a second by Commissioner Ingalls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries 6-0. Now we'll move on to number five for possible action. Discussion to approve the package retail liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services DBA La Vita, La Villaita, La Velita, number 172 pending the issuance of certificate of occupancy. La Velita 172 is represented by General Manager David Michael Barnes and Manager Kathy McConaughey, who have both signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Captain McTurian.
And this applicant has completed the required paperwork, paid the fees, and the sheriff's office is not in objection. This would be?
In the Michael Hole.
Number three, in the Michael Hole location. And for the record, that address is 1601 North Highway 395, number B, Minden, Nevada.
Questions? Commissioner Nelson, please.
Just curious. Number two didn't have a suite number, the other two do. Is there a reason for that?
It's not as sweet as the rest?
Number two is suite number C. Thank you. Yeah, the other two are A and B, so that explains it. Thanks.
All right, I'll open this for public comment. Any public comment?
I'm glad this property is going to be occupied. But I think the point of the limit of 15 machines isn't so you can open three businesses in a row, build walls between them, and call them separate businesses. These are operated by the same people. So really, what they're trying to approve is 45 slots, is my, if that's my understanding. And I just have a question about it. It just seems like they're skirting the law this way. I think if we have a rule, you know, I didn't object to two of them. That was 30. Now we're at 45. I don't know if that's fair to the other businesses that have been limited to 15 machines that are actually in big locations, should they just start subdividing their locations so they could put more machines in? So I just, a little question about that. Thank you.
Let me address the question. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I have an explanation. First of all, we're processing these in accordance with the law. If the Gaming Control Board sees that it's, in fact, skirting the law, they will deny it. That won't be us to deny. We've got to comply by our law. And our law was generated by a desire of the board to limit so that Dottie's wouldn't come in. And Dottie's has decided that they have a way to compete in this environment. And I'm sure I just said something that the district attorney's going to explain better. He wasn't, it didn't take him two seconds to get up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Zach Widley, DA's office. I want to clarify for the board, there was an ordinance under consideration the past month or so that would have affected these types of operations in terms of kitchen requirements, seating requirements, square footage requirements. The board elected not to proceed with that ordinance. So those are not requirements that are imposed for these types of operations under county code. The only thing I would add is that you do need to understand, and I believe you do, but you're being asked to approve 45 total slot machines at this particular location, the Michael Hole dealership, granted, in three separate bars and arguably restaurants. You do have fairly wide latitude under even county code to approve or disprove of gaming licenses. This was a point of discussion when we went through this ordinance last time that was directed toward these types of operations. There's existing county code, which, for instance, allows you to deny a license in your discretion if you feel that there's good and sufficient numbers of licenses in a particular area already. So just so long as you're aware of that, it's something to consider. So I did want to clarify that that ordinance that, and I wasn't sure what you were referring to, Mr. Chair, but the ordinance that was under consideration about a month ago did not, in fact, become county code.
Thank you for clarifying my remarks. The other part of this, though, that I have to make is it seems to me that businesses are always smarter at this kind of thing than we are in terms of designing a law. And one of the key cornerstones of republicanism is that you limit the number of laws. And we have tried valiantly to, I think, control the numbers and types of gaming. In fact, we just, on Thursday, Tuesday, we changed one that was going to be a full-blown casino to residential. But we move at a slower pace than business and not as quick. And I think that's what happens when government tries to control business. And that's just one of the outgrowths, in my opinion. So Commissioner Rice?
I think it's painfully obvious to anybody sitting here that we are reluctant and not pleased with this, forcing our sheriff to be the one making the recommendation. But I, for one, do not see how, since they have complied with all of the requirements, I think that it would be arbitrary and capricious for us to not allow it, since they're within all ordinances and requirements.
All right, they've met the law, the laws that we have. We don't, and I totally agree with what you're saying. However, I don't think we're forcing the sheriff. He jumped into the breach. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Nelson?
This is just for the liquor license, so we have to do what we need to do on the liquor license. The other issue we'll have to address when it comes up. I don't know if we'll get a chance to address it because it is the gaming board, but I think our sheriff knows how we feel, so we'll let it go with that.
Yeah, I think so.
Chairman, I think it's also appropriate to understand that this is just one step. And if the businesses that are applying for these licenses, once they're granted, if they're not in compliance with them, then I remove the license. And so we do have, you know, it's not that we don't have any control or say in the business, you know? And so I think, looking at the other businesses similar to these throughout the counties, we don't have, as far as a law and order thing, we don't have a lot of issues at those businesses necessarily. And when we do, we leverage these licenses to get them to change and modify so that they're not a problem. And we've been successful with the DA's office in doing that. So I don't anticipate any issues as far as, you know, law and order and public safety type of thing.
I think that's good. And I think by understanding the board's reluctance, it also gives you another arrow in your quiver, so to speak, if you have to take some steps. Having said all that, oh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Zach Widley, DA's office. Just wanted to clarify this point. This item and the items that have preceded it are asking you to approve not only the liquor license, but the restricted gaming license as well at the county level. Keep in mind, there is a separate state licensing requirement as well, but the agenda item is for the restricted gaming from, you know, approval by the county as well as the liquor license. Just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record.
All right, I read it. And we talked about that. Everybody understands that, right? Okay. All right, so we've had a pretty thorough discussion on this one and called for and concluded the public comment. What is the pleasure of the board? The board will, I'll make the motion then, as the chair. And let me get back to that item. Approve the onsite beer and wine, I move that we approve the onsite beer and wine-only liquor license package, retail liquor license, and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA Dottie's number 194 as presented. Approve the package retail license. Let me withdraw that motion and motion that we approve the package retail liquor and restricted gaming license for Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated DBA La Villaita, number 172 as presented. So we have a motion by the chair, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries six oh. All right, we'll move on to number six. For possible action discussion to approve the onsite retail liquor license, beer and wine only, for Ivano's Italian Restaurant, represented by the owner, Ivano Constantini. Mr. Constantini signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Thank you for somebody else. Captain McTurian.
Thank you. This applicant has completed all the paperwork, paid the fees, and the sheriff's office is not in objection. For the record, this business will be located at 166 Ponderosa Drive, number six, in State Line, Nevada.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? No questions, we'll open this for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the onsite retail liquor license, beer and wine only for Ivano's Italian Restaurant as presented.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? And the motion carries six oh. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the consent counter. And do we have a motion on the consent counter?
Mr. Chair, I would, first of all, before I make a motion, just want to correct one thing on item I, with regard to the Regional Transportation Commission report. We received an updated or revised schedule. It changed the date from 2018 to 2019 in their item number two. So with that change, I would move approval of consent counter A through S.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Walsh and a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries five oh. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, and so now we would move on to the administrative calendar. And once again, I would use my prerogative to bring forth first the item number four for possible action and discussion, which is the community grants. And I'll read that if the board concurs with moving that to number one. All right, so this is for possible action discussion to review and approve the community grant, communities' recommendations of awarding $155,000 in community grants previously budgeted and funded from the general fund and social services fund to various applicants for FY 2019, 2020. This will be Ms. Wood and Ms. Beckenbauer. It looks like it's just Ms. Wood.
It is, just Natalie Wood for the record. Karen was not available. I apologize. Let me get the presentation up. I didn't know you were going to move me on the agenda.
Well, I didn't know that all the people would be attending at this point.
And we do have at least half of the applicants that wanted to attend and be here in case you had questions of them. I'm not sure that we would do that today, based on what I have prepared. So bear with me. I don't think I'm going to be able to pull it up from here. The presentation was in the packet, and additionally, I did provide the rating sheet that was previously approved by the board a few years ago. I failed to include that in the agenda. I was brought into this project after the applications were received, after our finance department and social services department was able to come before you guys last fall, set the timeline and put out the timeline and the application for the applicants. We did get 21 applications. The funds available are 155,000, as you guys know. The amounts, the funds requested by the 21 applicants totaled 266,000, so we have a difference of 111,000. This was a really great opportunity that I was able to participate in. The community programs that we have for our residents are amazing, and I'll tell you, it was really hard to make a recommendation to you guys of how to fund and who to fund what amounts. So we took the policies that you guys approved last year, and we looked at the project versus operating to identify. You know, there was animal welfare, behavioral health, nutritional services, youth services, senior services. And like I said, they do so much for our community in so many different ways. We went and out and toured the organizations. We requested additional information regarding their budgets and what they were going to use the grants for, emailing back and forth between, you know, the three departments, finance, community services, and county manager to get that information to provide a recommendation for you guys. Additionally, our office, Jen, Patrick, and myself were able to meet and discuss and go over those recommendations based on past approvals to give you a recommendation that we hope fits, you know, your needs and also the needs of the community based on these programs and their past practice, new programs, and just the trends in the community. Additionally, we do have some recommendations that the budget worksheet be something that's included in the application and future cycles for the community grant program, which we can bring, well, the community grant program can bring before due next fall when they get the application approved. But that would be very helpful in determining how to identify recommendations. Additionally, further identifying specific projects versus operating costs and how you want those to look within the recommendations would be helpful, too, so that it's a very objective way, just like I said, it's so many great programs, it's hard to identify who to send funds to. Additionally, in the packet, we do have the recommendations that we gave you. This year, we added columns for operating versus project. And then I do have at the bottom kind of how we identified what projects are versus operating. Projects are specific goals, deliverables, where operating would be your regular maintenance and administration of day-to-day programs. So we put that in there. And then at the far right of the spreadsheet, you have our total recommendation and percentage based on each organization. Additionally, we have the policy that you guys previously approved attached, and I don't have anything else unless you have questions of me.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for responding so quickly.
Yes.
You did a great job. This is never easy. There have been, this is my eighth iteration with this. It doesn't get any easier. And you're right, there are a lot of great opportunities. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board. What are the comments of the board members? Commissioner Rice?
As I understand it, the next to the last column is the recommended amount to each organization requesting funds.
Correct.
And that it comes to the total budget of 155,000?
Correct. We do have...
That includes the 30,000 that's required to be given to services to the indigent population?
Yes, we do have 30,000 from indigent funds and 125 from general fund. It is noted in those columns how we broke up those. The indigent funds do have to specifically go to services that support that population, and Karen ensured through this process that the way we allocated funds met those needs.
So that would go to Austin's House, Boys and Girls Club, Carson Valley... So that would go to Austin's House, Boys and Girls Club, Carson Valley Food Closet, and Partnership of Community Resources?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Let me fill in a little bit about that. It has been 155,000, 165,000 the whole time. What we asked them to do back like 2013, 14 was, what portion of these funds, these requests, goes to serve the indigent population? So they tried to break it out and identify the monies for that. We approved in our last budget, the 155,000. And the next budget, if we wanted to approve more, we could do that. So we have that option. This is something that we can control if we want to. And what we've asked the staff to do is look at the organizations and come up with the recommendations. It's a very difficult thing. And we used to just have the money, and then we tried to divide it up as a board. It would take hours and hours, and we...I don't think we did it in a fair manner. I trust the staff to have done a fair...and I don't mean fair in terms of job, I mean fair in terms of equitable to other folks, distribution of this. And it's rare that you'll even see in the percent awarded column, 100% when we were doing it. Because we were trying to satisfy them all. So I think the staff has done a remarkable job of trying to analyze this and come up with an equitable distribution of these funds. Our task is to either agree or disagree, and if we disagree, move some of those funds. But be cognizant of the fact, if you move funding, it's going to affect another group because you're going to have to take it from somebody. Because at this point, we can't...we don't have additional funding available. Is that correct, Mr. County Manager? So I thank you for the work you've done. Questions from the Board? Further questions? No further questions? Since this is for action, I will open this to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Anybody want to talk us out of a particular award to a group? Anybody want to make a further plea on behalf of their organization? Because you know also, it would have to come out of somebody else's pocket. That's good. Is there anybody that has a real dire problem that wasn't identified during this process that we didn't hear or you don't think we heard? Wait a minute, we've satisfied everybody? That's only because you did it, Natalie. I do have one question. When you talk about the projects, and it seemed a real issue as a project to me, and that's the roofing project for...which one? Yeah, for Family Support Council?
So yes, the Family Support Council submitted a request that had various items related to their new daycare operation and some projects, you know, in curriculum and training opportunities in addition to some needs of their roof for their building. So we separated those, two separate items, and looked at the project needs of opening up the daycare. It's a project, you're going to need a lot of these things one time to get up and get going, so we wanted to fully fund that. And then we looked at the roof project, looked at what other means they've been able to do to raise some funds, and also what the Sheriff's Office was able to contribute, and we wanted to match that so that we were looking at it as two separate items, two separate projects. Because it is a one-time roof, it could be considered under that project, but different grants have different specifications, and our grant policy doesn't really define a project in detail relating to construction, so I feel like it's appropriate within our grant policy. Other grant policies, you know, are outlined whether you can or cannot do that. So when we talked with Jen and Patrick, it seemed appropriate.
So with the 5,000 and a roughly $25,000 roof project, they can do, what, 20% of it? Is that...
Yeah.
Are we looking for other people to supplement?
So they have, you know, done fundraisers, they have donations from the Sheriff's Office, and they are, you know, looking into other means. And there's...I believe there's more information to that roof project and, you know, partnership with the other tenants in the building, too, that I'm not aware of. We based it on the funding we have and the overall request of, you know, kind of the two projects that they requested.
Okay, and the Sheriff's Office would help do this?
They have already donated funds towards this project, separate of this request.
Let me see, now, we fund the Sheriff's Department out of the General Fund.
So...
So then we give them money to fund this.
Doug might actually have a little bit more information on that, on how those funds were raised. Sorry to call you out, Doug.
(laughing). First, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, my understanding is that they had other fundraisers that went toward this project, toward the roof project. It wasn't from their budget. So it's not like we're funding them through our budget to fund that, so...
Terry, will be...
Yes, ma'am.
...see it over for the record. Yes, they did have the haunted house fundraiser, and a portion of that was donated to Family Support Council for the roof, specifically for the roof.
Okay.
And I think they had some other fundraisers, but it wasn't general fund money.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak, Mr. District Attorney?
Thank you, Chairman Penzel. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just disclosure, I'm on the Family Support Council Board, but Commissioner Nelson's correct. The fundraising that has occurred was separate from the funding that the Sheriff's Office receives from the General Fund. The other tenant of the building is, I think it's Backpack Buddies, and they share the roof. I'm not sure...there's ongoing discussions about funding the roof. The Family Support Council has not raised all the money that's necessary to repair the roof.
Who owns the building?
The Family Support Council owns the building, or at least half the building. The food closet as well, right? Backpack Buddies, as I understand, subleases half the building from the food closet.
So they're going to raise the rent for Backpack Buddies?
I don't believe so.
I'm just kidding.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But your point is well taken. To build the roof, you can't build half of it. You have to either do it all or not any of it. The Family Support Council is continuing to do fundraisers, but the ones that they have done have not raised all the funds necessary so far.
We do have a requirement that they have to report back how they utilized funds.
Right.
So I would, you know, maybe we could, within that resolution, have a detailed plan, you know, of how if they do not use their funds that we don't cash a check or something along those lines, and we could work with the District Attorney's Office to revise the language on their specific resolution for that amount.
Well, this has been an ongoing issue in supporting these things, and some of them, every year, we give money to them. Like the Citizens Patrol, the search and rescue. I don't know how we do without those things. Maybe they need to be formalized, and that's something we should probably look for...look at in our budget. The other ones that I think are just absolutely necessary, and they're becoming more and more necessary, are the behavioral health issues or categories. And if we're serious about helping, both in suicide prevention and mental health, those two things, I look that we're going to have to really take those on as categories within our budget, Mr. County Manager. And I would like...personally, I would like to see your recommendations during the budget process on how we would fund those things. Because that shouldn't be dependent on a community grant. It should be a willful direction of this county that we're going to help solve a mental health issue problems, in my view. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels about that. Maybe they could chime in and talk about it.
I would say that the partnerships we've had, we have in Douglas County, just going through the leadership program and this, being a part of this program, it's amazing to see how well Douglas County and our various organizations work together. And having experience working in Carson City as well, it's amazing, and it's really a great thing to see how our community and our organizations come together to support each other, even if they're doing similar things, how they back each other up, trade stuff out, refer, and they connect. So I think that doesn't really help what you're asking, but we have an amazing community that works together to serve our residents, and they do it, you know, to meet the needs of our community.
I'm not questioning that. But I think that some of the needs have outstripped our ability to just voluntarily take care of things. Did you want to make a comment?
No, I agree with your comment. I think on certain issues, especially behavioral health, we can no longer stick our head in the sand, and we need to face these issues head-on, so I'm looking forward to the County Manager's recommendations.
Ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Colleen Lawrence. I'm the Executive Director of Moxie Up, so I just want to take a quick moment to thank you kindly for...this was our inaugural year of utilizing the community grant, and we did exactly that. We utilized this for a platform for community services for youth and behavioral health services, but we utilized it as a unique opportunity for a community, public, and private partnership for the community grant. And I...probably because it is my public background of funding, that this is why we did this. And we are very proud of our public and our community partners. Our school district jumped in 100% with us. We were planning this for over six months. Our Sheriff's Office, our community center, our private businesses, everybody jumped in with us. And what we did is we used this grant as a piece of funding, along with private businesses, to go into the schools, and we just hosted it with, if you know who Do Be Nice is, then you get bonus points. But we had Do Be Nice go into our middle schools and talk to over 1,200 students about just being nice and talking about their brand. But it's not done yet. So for the next year, we're going to work with our students on being kind, right?
Maybe they should come work with us.
So all I can say is you guys asked me to get on your agenda this winter, and it was easier to hang out with my teenagers. So we are...we've been working with all of our teenagers about just being kind, right, and working on their brand. And we thank you because we utilized this grant, and we pushed 100%. We didn't hold any of the funds. We pushed 100% of these funds back out to bring influencers into our community, influencers that we knew our teenagers would respond to. And so we appreciate you, and I just want to say thank you, and we look forward to continue to work with our teens and our young adults in our community to look what we can do to raise and level up our bar. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments, public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, absent any further discussion by the Board, I move approval of the distribution of $155,000 in community grants to various applicants for FY 2019-20.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. We'll bring back the resolution shortly.
You did a great job. Thank you, Natalie. All right, and we'll go back to item number one. For possible action, discussion to appoint Jeremy Hutchings as the Douglas County Engineer and authorizing a starting salary of up to 105,000, together with the standard Douglas County benefit package effective March 2, 2020. Mr. Delaire.
Thank you, Chairman Penzel. This is Tom Delaire, Community Development Director, for the record.
You're anxious to do this one?
I am, actually, yes, a little bit. It's been a lot of late nights, but I brought...asked Jeremy to attend here today and introduce him. He is...was a top candidate selection by the interviewee committee, and we have had discussions in...with his experience and starting salary, and that's why we're here today, is to discuss that with you and the Board. And then also, if you approve the salary moving forward, then having a start date effective on March 2 of this year. So a little history, I guess, about the process. We started back in September last year for recruitment, and the first recruitment didn't accept our offer, and so we went out and had a second recruitment. We had five applicants in that process, three of which we moved forward to interviews, and Jeremy was our top pick out of that selection group. So it's been...it's been a long haul, and so we're here today to present to Jeremy, or Jeremy to you guys, and see if you guys had any extra questions that you wanted to discuss with him. He has, I guess, to...I started working with Jeremy actually when I was with Rob Anderson in the...is that '90s, right?
'97.
'97. And I got to work with Jeremy about a year and a half, so it's been a while since he and I have been colleagues, but I'm excited about this proposition. And he's been here in Nevada for 23 years. This is February, I think, is the date for his anniversary date for moving here in Nevada. So my times that I had here on my background was a little bit off. He did live in Carson City for two years, so it's 20-year resident at Douglas County, 23 years' experience now at Anderson Engineering. So he has extensive experience with the application process on the other side of our table, and that's, you know, part of me taking this position as Community Development Director is to refine that and make it easier for us to review those applications, and I think that's a passion of his as well from my conversations with him. So if you have any questions of me, I...we're available.
Questions from the Board? Commissioner Ingles.
This would be directed at Mr. Hutchinson. Your long-term relationship with R.O. Anderson, would you find it in yourself to be able to disagree with him on some projects that perhaps are not in the best interest of the county?
Jeremy Hutchings, good afternoon. Yeah, I think so. The advantage of engineering is there's a lot of codes already in place that I'm pretty good at interpreting and following. And we have...right now, I'm Director of Engineering at the firm. Rob and I disagree on projects, probably weekly, I'd say, at our management meeting, at least once a week, so that I don't see a problem there.
Further questions? Commissioner Ingles?
Mr. Delaire, this is directed towards you, and I don't know if you worked on this or know this. What is the labor burden that you use on a salary?
The labor burden? I... That would probably be for the HR folks to answer. And here she is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Wendy Lang, Human Resources, for the record. Commissioner Ingles, the typical labor burden is roughly 35% to 45%. It really depends vastly on the health insurance, but I think we budget typically about 13,000 to 14,000 for health insurance, and 29% currently for PERS, and then there's just a few more percentage points for Medicare and a couple other taxes that we need to take into consideration.
Wendy, could you come back up? Wendy, could you come back up? Could you explain why he wouldn't particularly know what the labor burden is because of the way we structure, how we look at each person and whether or not they're part of the union or not? And whether that's part of the agreement or not in terms of the labor burden and how that works?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm not sure I'm following. Why Mr. Hutchings wouldn't understand?
No, no.
Mr. Delaire?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Why he wouldn't know that information?
Yes, yes.
Well, it's my day-to-day world and it's what I live in. And we do have varying, right, different PERS contribution levels. Some employees are not eligible for PERS, some have different rates. The health insurance varies vastly among employees.
Okay. Is that a more complete answer for you, Commissioner Ingles? Okay. Thank you. Further questions from the board? Would like to make one, I have two questions, actually, one question and a remark. And you included the NRS Chapter 254 definition of the county engineer, as well as who appoints them. And it says clearly that the appointment is made by the Board of Commissioners. I would interpret that to mean that the county engineer works directly for the Board of Engineers, is it, the Board of Commissioners, is that correct?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. There are a few positions in the county that are direct appointments by the board. However, the board in the past has always had those individuals report to your county manager. But as far as who they work for, you appoint them and you have the power to remove them as well.
Okay. And if we delegate that authority of who supervises them, that, that person then would write the annual review of those folks, is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Okay, in this particular case, while we appoint him, he works directly for the community, the Director of Community Development, and he is responsible for writing the evaluation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is everybody clear on that? And is it acceptable with the board? Commissioner Ingles.
There's a caveat here, Mr. Hutchison. You're working for us now and your interests have to be that of the county and not old alliances with other organizations. Can you handle that?
Confirmed, yes, sir.
And the, I would also make a remark that the first item on the consent calendar was approval of the appointment of Yvette Dome as the alternative sentencing chief. And, and I think we, if we'd had the time, we should have brought her up and congratulated her because our consent calendar has been approved, her appointment has been approved, and she would be the first female alternative sentencing chief that we've had in Douglas County. And I think that's remarkable and I would like to make note of that. And certainly by not bringing that up, that was no reflection on our, at least my appreciation of the work they do. But we're not required to do anything more than approve what the chief, or what the constable had done. In this particular case, he's actually required that we appoint him. So we needed to bring him forward. So that was the differentiation. But does not reflect anything on how much we appreciate her volunteering, as well as being appointed to that position. So with that, I'll open this up for public comment. Any public comment on this appointment? The former county engineer. Is this a handoff?
I'm Eric Nielsen, for the record. I probably should sign in, I will before I leave. I, going through, doing research, looking through old plat maps and old county engineers, you see a bunch of different names. And whenever I saw a new one, I just write it down. So the first county engineer, I believe, was hired in 1959, and there have been 17 of us. So an average of 3.5 years each. The lowest one I could see went for nine months. I made it the longest out of anybody, seven years. Only Carl Rushmeyer and I made it past four, as far as I can tell. It's a hard job, it really is. And you can tell that by the turnover rate. I just want to state that it's been through two national recruitments. And finally, there's someone that is, is qualified to do it, I believe, when they hired me. I believe they caught me on the third recruitment, they had to put it out three times. I was hired above the midpoint as well. It's a hard position to fill. So I would state to the board that please agree to this. If Tom believes Jeremy's the right person for the job, to make the approval to hire above the midpoint, because I don't know that another recruitment will end successful. And being that Jeremy worked for our O.A., he and I debated a lot all the time. And so he can fix everything that I messed up over the last seven years. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Resnick. I am currently on my lunch break and wanted to speak as a private citizen of Douglas County. I have known Jeremy Hutchings for about 19 years, pretty much the length of time I've been with the county. But I'm a private citizen. And I find him to be an intelligent, thoughtful and proactive professional. He truly cares for his community, which is Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Matt Bernard. I also want to give a good word for Jeremy. I want to tell you that I was working for Mr. Anderson the day both these gentlemen showed up. So I was there 23 years ago in the same room with him. So I think the county's done a wonderful job lately recruiting people, I got to tell you. From Mr. Booth, Mr. Delaire, now with Mr. Hutchings, it hasn't always been a smooth ride walking in the community development building, I'll be honest with you. And I suppose, Mr. Ingles, you can relate to this. The folks you work with, you might always not agree with, right? And so I would tell you that in the managers' meetings that Jeremy references, we've had some real hootenannies in there. And so we're not all in blood and brain and I respect Jeremy thinking for himself. So having said that, I just want to say that I'll miss Jeremy, but he'll have to be there a lot more than seven years to fix everything Eric did.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Any other comments? Now I'll bring it back to the board. Comments from the board? Commissioner Ingles?
Well, with all these breathless endorsements, it looks like you got a job, Bill.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, if there's no further discussion, I would move to appoint Jeremy Hutchings as the Douglas County engineer and authorize the starting salary of up to $105,000, together with standard Douglas County benefits package effective March 2nd, 2020.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Rice. Any other comments? I would just make the comment, I really think this is an excellent hire. Very personally glad that you applied and that you're going to take a huge burden off of Tom and, and let him speak more to us during these presentations, which I'm thinking he's not real happy about, but nonetheless. But I do appreciate you applying and being selected. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The vote carries five oh. Congratulations. Thank you, Eric. Now we'll move on to number two. For presentation only, introduction of ordinance 2020-1564. An ordinance approving a planned development PD SFR 8,000 overlay. Zone for the Rancho Sierra project on 80 acres, including a tentative subdivision map, creating 257 total lots with 239 single-family residential lots, averaging 9,173 square feet in size. The smallest 8,000-square foot, the largest 18,250 square feet, including a variance for relief from Douglas County Code DCC 20.690.030 Bowlegs Y, Bowlegs V, requiring a foot, 50-foot restricted-use area bordering a USGS-designated Blue Line Stream, Falky-Tilman Ditch. The subject property is located at the southern terminus of Tilman Lane within the Gardnerville Ranchos community plan area. The applicant is Rancho Sierra Group LLC, represented by Ms. Pansky. DP 19-0504. First reading, Mr. Mason.
Just thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners. Steve Mason of the Planning Department. I don't really have anything to add, as I'll be formally presenting on March 5th with the entire project. But I want to clear up one mistake, and that is Attachment B1, which is packet page 396. That's the older iteration of the project with 300-plus lots. The actual subdivision's going to have 239 residential lots. However, the, the overall coverage of the PD overlay is the same on both maps. But I just wanted to clear up that the attachment is not, that's a much more dense project. And what is actually going to be coming, and we'll have that cleared up on the March 5th hearing packet.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board? Commissioner Nelson?
Not a question, but there's a gentleman in the audience that I talked to this morning. And I, I kind of told him he could be here at 2:00 and be here in time to make a comment on this item, not realizing when I was talking to him that it was for presentation only. So if I could, I'd like to voice some of his concerns for him, since he can't speak at this meeting.
Well, he can speak, but it'd be at the end of the meeting. Do you want me to open it up for him, or do you want to speak?
Well, I don't want to open it for him and not open it up for everybody. So I prefer just to voice some of his concerns.
Please do.
We heard some at the beginning from other people, so since he wasn't here at that point, maybe I can voice his concerns. I believe his property backs to Tilman, and so he's very concerned about all of the building, large commercial trucks and stuff coming in through Tilman. And I wanted to let him know that we would be taking very good care to make sure that any damage that is done by the construction vehicles to the road or walls or anything else in that area that they may cause damage to would be taken care of. And that was his main concern, was damage along Tilman. Of course, he doesn't want the project, but that's neither here nor there. We just have to do what we need to do, but just let him know that we will make sure that Tilman is put back in its original condition once this project is completed.
I think that's especially true, given the fact that it was just rebuilt and that particular area. Commissioner Ingles?
In the presentation, it says in the map, creating 257 total lots with 239 single-family. What were the, what's with these other lots? Are they going to be utilized or what?
Steve Mason, most of these are drainage basins. There's a couple that might be road extensions at another point. And I believe that's about it, as far as the extra lots. They're all utility-related.
Commissioner Walsh?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. We've heard about the secondary access on this project before. And now, my understanding is that the county portion of the road that's going to be used for secondary access is not necessarily up to snuff. I would like, perhaps, the county manager to arrange a little trip for some of us who don't want to take their vehicles out on that road, to take a look at that road and, and see firsthand what the issues are.
Well, I'd offer you the use of my 1946 Jeep.
You don't want to go out there either.
No, I don't mind. But I, I think that's a good suggestion. We could all go out and tour it. I, I do, when I was listening to Mr. McCallum, I, I do see that that's an, an important aspect of it. We were really concerned about that with the Valley Knolls project, and I think we should be equally concerned about it for this project. And certainly, the RTC should be involved. And interestingly, in checking, and I'm sure everybody here did, check the cash on hand. And then we have a little over $3 million in the road operating fund, and we have over $7 million in the RTC budget. And we may have to reprioritize or recommend to the RTC they reprioritize some of that money.
Yes, sir.
So we'll see, have to look at that. I think it's an important mandatory thing to do. The other part of that is that that road is, at some point in time, could be connected to, drive to the east to 88.
West.
Or west, excuse me. Commissioner Nelson?
I think it will have to come out to 88, so that's not a question, as far as I'm concerned. But we also have, I think, the East Fork Fire District was asked about the bridge. Even though they said it might be okay, I would like to get that in writing rather than just verbally.
That's right.
Yes. And as far as the bridge load right now, I think actually there's a sign on it that says three tons, but we talked to people that said it would be six tons, which is double what it says. And I think that if it doesn't say that on the bridge, we should get that in writing also, that we've talked to someone that, that has indicated that it might be for a heavier load than what it's currently listed as.
Yeah, I totally agree. Perhaps the county manager can get us a certificate of some kind of, of the weight. And since we have a new county engineer, he might be involved in that. Any other questions, points? Commissioner Ingles?
I, rather than, I mean, I don't disagree with Commissioner Walsh about going out there, but rather than us taking a field trip, why not send one of these engineers out there that know more about it than we do and have them report back to us?
Well, maybe he should be also on the trip. So.
It's up to you.
Take an engineer and put him under it.
Perhaps take the engineer and perhaps take someone from East Fork and someone from the DC SO.
Okay. I think that's all valid. Commissioner Ingles?
Like, one of these tanker trucks that the fire department uses, how much do one of those things weigh when they're full?
I don't know.
Thousands, tens of thousands.
40,000 pounds is what they should max out at. But I'm, I don't know how big the tank is. Well, at normal, the normal road is stressed for 80,000 pounds. That's a, the, the semi and the attached trailer. I had to do that a lot in my last job, so. I'm also curious about something else that Mr. McCallum brought up, and that is, in the expanded agenda sheet, it talks about the Rancho's, or the Gardnerville GID approved this project, a five oh vote. And Mr. McCallum was talking about they were discussing the water issue. I'm not clear now. I was, I was told that they are also hooked up as a mainline to the Gardner Ville Water Company. So if they're having an issue, they could divert water from, or could acquire water from Gardner Ville.
Mr. Chairman, the general manager is here from that district if you would like to talk with him. I'm sure he would like to talk with us.
Oh, please come up, sir.
Greg Reed for the record. The board did approve the project. The board, however, is considering a future potential tie-in with either Gardner Ville Water or the Town of Mindon, so that's something that the board is considering to, pursuing for the future. But as is, the project was approved by our board.
And will serves for the water?
And will serves have been delivered in the past, and so we still intend to serve water, sewer, roads for that project, yes.
And the initial project was 339?
Pardon?
Wasn't the original project 339 residents?
Correct. And the current one is 239.
Yes, so, okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner, wait a second. Sir? Mr., Ms. Reed? Could you come back up? Commissioner Ingles has a question.
The question is, if the, there is the apparent potential of a necessity to hook up to the Gardner Ville system, and maybe this is something that should be done with the development, standing by, and make sure that the developer incurs this expense and not the county as a potential possibility. I mean, how close, how much of a discussion did you have?
Well, the district currently has the capacity to serve the project. That's, that's not an issue. What we're looking at is future emergency reserves, emergency supplies, and anytime in the water utility business that you can get an interconnection with your neighbor is, is an advantage, okay? And so we would look at the possibility of doing that in the future. The other thing that helps, when you look at interconnections, the possibility of grant funding to help pay for those, so that would be the entire process that we would look at. We would look at the possibility of interconnections, and maybe even two, if we could get both and create a loop system. And then we would look at potential funding through grant processes, so. And again, we're just at the beginning phases of those talks, and we'll continue to work forward with that in the future.
A question. You pump into a tank that distributes to your customers, correct?
That, that's typical, and yes, that's what we do.
Okay. Would it be a consideration of value for the grid to have the developer put in a secondary tank to back up your primary tank?
So I'll answer that kind of in a roundabout way. So within the last three months, in November, the board also initiated a special assessment. That special assessment is for all future development within the district. The purpose of that stu, of that special assessment was to ensure that future infrastructure requirements were paid for by future development rather than by our existing customers. So anything that comes in that's necessary, whether it's tanks, whether it's new wells, whether it's larger tanks, additional tanks, whatever the case may be, we now have a funding mechanism to help offset the costs of those. So the board initiated that special assessment in November, and so this would be one of the first projects that would be subject to that special assessment.
I don't know. I'm sorry. Well, I was going to ask, is there a phasing plan on this? There is a phasing plan?
Steve Mason, yes, that's correct. It actually would be five phases. The first phase of 20 lots with the final map to be recorded by 2024. That would be the first phase rather, and then the final and fifth phase by 2032. So over eight years, correct, five phases.
One thing that I think was really good for us to have in the Big George Riverwood development, they totaled up over the period of time that this would be a development, the amount that the homes would contribute in terms of the school district, the water system, and the hookup fees for both water and sewer, and then the construction, the residential construction fee, and what that would total out to be. It was enlightening to see, and we're not talking about just a couple million dollars, we're talking about $19 million. I think it'd be helpful to see that with your develop.
The current special assessment is $4,331 per lot. At 237 lots.
See, that'd be another.
And that's above and beyond the cost for the water and sewer connections.
Just offhand, what's a water and sewer, or do you know which one?
About $8,000. So you're talking about $12,000 per lot for connection fees.
Okay. So a total number would be, I think, illuminating, see how much they're going to contribute. So thank you. Thank, oh, wait a second. Commissioner Walsh?
Greg, just, just a clarification, okay? Mr. Ingles brought up the fact that, you know, maybe the county, I don't know exactly what his words were, but it seemed like he thought that the county might be on the hook for this intertie, and I think that's not the case. I think it would be grid and Gardner Ville, Mindon, whoever, that would be on the hook for the, for the cost of any intertie. Is that correct?
And if we're lucky, the state and the feds.
Exactly, yeah. Hopefully, the feds a lot.
Right.
Any further questions for the general manager? Commissioner Rice?
When Brown Hill GID intertied with the systems that they did, was there any cost to the county whatsoever?
Negative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you participating in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delary, you had a comment? Is this as an engineer, or is this the director of community?
It's community development director. I, yeah, you guys did appoint me as county engineer, whatever. Take your pick. The water truck conversation you had earlier, I just wanted to make sure I had my numbers right, but the truck itself is, has a gross vehicle weight of 60,000 pounds. It's distributed, if it has two axles in the rear, to two 22,000-pound axle loads and 16,000 in the front, so 60,000 pounds, similar to a garbage truck, is the weight limit for those.
And you want to, you want to look at the axle weight?
Right. That's the axle weights is, is 44 in the rear, so 22,000 each axle and 16 in the front for the 60,000 pounds, 60,000-pound vehicle. And that's, that's for a 4,000-gallon tank, tanker truck.
Thanks. Further questions from the board? Mr. Mason, this was for first reading and presentation only. Thank you. And now we'll go on to item number three. It's for presentation only. Introduction of Ordinance 2020-1563. It is not correctly listed in any of the agenda items, so I've corrected that. A zoning text amendment to Sections 20.660.010, agriculture and related limited commercial uses, 20.664.170 telecommunications facilities, 20.690.030-generational standards and Appendix A definitions of Douglas County Code to achieve conformity with the previously adopted 2018 International Building Code and 2018 International Residential Code regarding permitting requirements for detached accessory structures and fences. This is a first reading. Mr. Mason?
Yes, thank you, Steve Mason, again, and as with the previous item, this, the hearing will be on March 5th, and this is to tie up some loose ends. David Lundgren came before you last year to do part of the county code, to bring the building code up to date with International Building Code to allow fences up to seven feet and accessory structures up to 200 without need for a building permit. And as with the other item, there's one mistake I want to clear up for the record, and that is that I got the ordinance number wrong. I listed it as 2020-1653. In fact, the ordinance number is 2021-563, and I goofed at the top of the title page, Packet Page 400. The staff report's subject on Page 402 and the title of the ordinance on Page 405. So again, the actual ordinance number is 2021-563. And I also want to add, I've got 40-plus copies of the corrected ordinance and the map that I referred to on the previous item on the table out front for the record.
Thank you. So I read it correctly. All right. Any questions? Comments from board members? No? Watch the seven-foot-high fence. Should eliminate some conversations otherwise. I digress. I'll open this then for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. It's presentation only, thank you. If there are no comments, then we'll move on to the next item. Yeah, but I, this is presentation only. You can comment on it at the end, okay?
I don't have time in the end. I'm against the interaction.
Okay. Okay. Well, you can say that, Mr. Turner, and it'll be, it'll be accepted as a comment. All right, I did four, we're going to five. Discussion on Douglas County's position regarding amendments to NRS Chapter 373 that authorizes rural Nevada counties to impose by ordinance or ballot question a tax on diesel fuel in an amount not to exceed five cents per gallon and to provide direction to staff whether to examine the possible imposition of a diesel tax to bring parity between gasoline and diesel fuel taxes. And this is me. I'm bringing this forward because when we adopted the five cent per gallon tax on gasoline in, I think it was 2016, which I voted against, it's brought in $13 million to the county for road construction, and it has been replenished every year because of the diesel tax, or because of the tax, for road maintenance and construction. And at that time, it was not disclosed to us that it did not include diesel. And the reason that they didn't disclose that to us is that there was an extreme interest on the part of the dominant party at that time and now to have indexing on fuels. And if you read through the background on it, you saw where they struck out indexing. And now, it seemed unreasonable that all of the rural counties which rejected indexing were also then taken out of the tax base on the diesel. And so in the last two legislative meetings, they have tried to get it corrected. The first time, they, it was deleted at the last minute because the party in power didn't want to be labeled as a tax, taxing group, although it was the Democrats. And then this next time, it was included on the basis of some lobbying by the rural counties themselves and NACO. So the legislature, in their great wisdom, said, hey, we'll go back and allow you to do it. You can either do it by a majority vote, a supermajority vote of the county commission, or you can refer it as a referendum on the ballot. And we are joined now by the clerk to help us talk through how that would, would happen. We were also provided on our desks a copy of SB 48, the authority for rural counties to raise five-cent diesel tax, and I think it has two different ways to put it on the ballot, or two, two different explanations of how that would work. Perhaps this is a time when we should ask the county clerk if she wants to participate in this particular discussion. Do you?
Kathy Lewis, Clerk Treasure for the record. I am here to answer any questions if you decide to take it to a ballot to the people for timing-wise. So I'm here to provide resources.
Okay. Then the, the basic, I think that there are two basic questions that we have to decide. One, do we want to go forward with this? If so, do we want to refer this to the ballot, or do we want to see if we can do it by a supermajority? Mr. Rickert, you're here to add to this? You have a presentation on this? Well, whenever we have the opportunity to hear from you and your mic is on, we certainly want to do that. I didn't want anybody on the staff to take heat for this, so that's why I put my name there.
Oh, that's fine. So Phil Rickert, Director of Public Works for the record. I was asked to put together the presentation on this diesel fuel tax and, and what's, what is allowed through the NRS 373-062, that was just approved in the last, in the 80th, in the 80th session of the legislature. Just a little bit of background information. NRS currently defines in these very, in these various chapters, Chapter 365, 66, 73, and 445C and 590, various taxes and allocations for fuel under these different definitions. So 365 primarily deals with the gasoline tax. 366 is where the special fuels taxes are for, and that includes diesel. And then 373 is where they've carved out specifically the, the terms for the county, what the counties can apply in terms of taxes to fuels. And the last one is a, is a minor one, but it's really where some of the additional fees and charges are for the inspection fees, cleanup fees, and any other miscellaneous fees that are assigned to these, to, through fuels. I just referenced that there so that if you are interested, you can pull up those sections of the NRS in the future. Just for background, the fuel taxes are comprised, and there'll be later slides, but fuel, fuel taxes are comprised of a federal tax, state taxes, and then the state of Nevada has allowed for certain county taxes on various fuels. All state taxes are determined by the state legislature. Later, they are mandated, and they are predominantly governed by Chapters 365, 175, and 365, 540 within the NRS. Some state taxes are mandated for use by the county, so the county, or the state did allocate a portion of what is the mandated taxes by the state for county purposes. But anything that is strictly under county code, or all county taxes, are determined by the county ordinance or a vote of the people. So in Douglas County, if you looked at the motor fuel taxes, and I've broken it out here into two columns, we've got the gasoline taxes, taxes on gas, gas in the county, which is the little, little over 18 cents for federal taxes, again, an 18-cent portion for the state taxes. And then there is of the state taxes, there's about six and three. And then there is, of the state taxes, there's about 6.3, 6.35 cents of the state mandated tax goes to the county. That's their, the state funds that are allocated to the county. And then, as you mentioned a few years ago, you voted, the board voted to approve what NRS allowed, which was a nine-cent tax strictly on, for county on the gasoline taxes. On the diesel side, currently, there is strictly, there's only a federal tax of .24, about 24 cents over that, and a state tax of about 28 cents on every gallon of gas of diesel fuel. As you notice, there's no allocation in the state for diesel fuel taxes that come back to the county, and there's no allocation currently, or was not any allocation currently, for the county to impose any tax on diesel. So what that means is we essentially get no revenue for any diesel sales in the, in the county to maintain our roads. What that means, what that breaks down to is that in Douglas County, based on last year's averages or last year's data, in the county itself, we have around 22 million gallons of gasoline sold through the various stations. That generated roughly $3.38 million in revenue that's used for road maintenance. We have another 5.75 million gallons of diesel fuel that's sold in the county, which generates zero revenue for, for road maintenance. I didn't realize this was, this slide wasn't supposed to be this way, but here we go. I'll just do it all at once. So what that, what that translates to, and what I wanted to point to the, out to this board, is that Douglas County road maintenance funding exclusively is from the owners of gas-powered vehicles. Owners are typically larger, heavier diesel-powered vehicles, do not directly contribute to road county maintenance. And as Commissioner Penzel pointed out, the legislation, SB 48, which was, was recently enacted, was co-sponsored by the Nevada Association of Counties, and in their reports found that there was little or no correlation between gas and diesel, diesel costs in any region and the apparent tax rate. I think it's an important thing to think about when you're talking about whether this is a pass-through tax or simply shifts the, the market valuations. This is a recent comparison, we actually pulled these numbers yesterday from an online source, GasBuddy, for markets in this area. We looked at Douglas County, Carson City, Lyon, specifically in the Fernley area, Washoe, in Sparks area. What you see in this table, and what I'm going to point out here, is this, in the gasoline tax line, you can see that gasoline tax in Douglas, Carson, and Lyon County right now are all comparable at the, and this is the, this is strictly the county portion of tax, not the state and federal. The state and federal portion stays the same in all jurisdictions. So if you're just looking at the added tax that the, that each county has applied, or is allowed to apply, you'll see that it's roughly 15 cents in Douglas, Carson, and Lyon County. And within those jurisdictions, you've got gas, current gasoline prices, this is on standard gasoline, ranging from $3, a little over 3 cents, $3 a gallon in Douglas, down to $2.55 in Lyon, in Lyon County, in the Fernley area. Surprisingly, Washoe County, which has, because of the, the tax indexing that Commissioner Penzel mentioned, they actually have a tax right now on gasoline in Washoe of 51 cents per gallon. Their total tax burden is almost 90 cents a gallon when you include the state and federal, the other state and federal mandates. And yet, their fuel prices are marginally the same as everywhere, as they are in the entire region. There's very little difference between those, their, their average fuel price for gasoline and what's paid, what you'd pay for down here in Carson City or even Douglas County. So it's, it has very little influence essentially on the effective price of gas. Diesel, it's even, on the diesel side, it's even more surprising. There's, obviously, there's no county-imposed tax, there's only the state and federal tax on diesel within Douglas, Carson, and Lyon right now. And in particular, if you look at Washoe, the, the legislature allowed, the indexing allowed Washoe to have a 37-cent tax on diesel fuel for their, for their county, and yet, their price of diesel fuel is lower than it is in Fernley. So again, there's, there's no, there's no real correlation between the tax and the effective price of the gas, or the fuel. What does NRS 373 do, and what did the legislature allow? Well, the legislature allowed Douglas County and all rural counties, in fact, to impose a tax on diesel sold in that county. The board may approve that by ordinance, and it cannot exceed five cents per gallon. The board may not adopt an ordinance unless it was approved by at least two-thirds majority. So in the case of your board, that's a four-to-one vote. Or in the case of that, if that's not the case, then it would be, you can't, you could not approve it unless it went to a vote of the people. So you have those two choices, either, as Commissioner Penzel mentioned, it's a supermajority vote, in this case, of the board, which would impose it, or you'd have to take it to the, to the general election. What would it mean for Douglas County? This is based on, again, the Nevada Department of Motor Vehicles published a report based on the 2018 data in early 2019, in terms of total taxable diesel gallons sold in the various, and I picked just three of the counties, they, they actually listed all counties in Nevada, all rural counties, that is. But looking at just the counties within our immediate area of Douglas, Carson, and Lyon, that's the taxable diesel gallons sold, and at a five-cent revenue, what that would, what those revenues would mean, or what that would translate to in terms of additional revenue for the county. The only jurisdiction so far that has taken action on this is Carson City and their Board of Supervisors at their November 7, 2019 meeting. At that meeting, they voted to adopt a five-cent per gallon diesel fuel tax by ordinance with a ballot question at the second general election following implementation of the tax, which is effectively what they did, is they said, we're putting the tax in place by ordinance, and then providing a sunset clause for the, for the public to vote on in the future, to either repeal it or keep it in place. That motion was approved four-to-one by their Board of Supervisors. So what that means for Doug, for Carson City is they will effectively, when that ordinance is enacted or implemented, they will have a five-cent tax on diesel above and beyond what the federal and state current taxes are for diesel fuel, which will be used for their county road maintenance. So for here in Douglas County, a proposed five-cent diesel fuel tax would raise approximately $290,000 in additional revenue. It would increase the road maintenance budget by about 8.5%. It would help address the $20 million in critical road maintenance project needs within the county. And the last thing I'll just mention again is that the regional fuel pricing, based on these reports, does not appear to be influenced by mark, appears to be influenced principally by market forces and not the county tax rates. And again, just in summary, Carson City, with their passage, will be seeing roughly around $395,000 annually in, in tax next year from diesel fuel sales. Carson, or Douglas County could see a potential of 287 or 290, roughly $290,000 in revenue if you enacted it by ordinance today. Or recommended a staff that we bring back in ordinance for active, for implementation. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Commissioner Engels.
All of our fuel here in Douglas County is trucked in, is it?
In the whole of Nevada.
Right, we don't have any refineries here. So the holding tanks for diesel are in Sparks, I don't know, somewhere in Reno. Now, this would account for the fact that the wholesale price for diesel in Reno would be substantially less than here, because these trucks have to bring it all the way down here, and they're going to do it for free. It's like that Chevron station up at the lake there at Kingsbury.
Kingsbury?
What's that guy up to now? $5 a gallon for Supreme? Something like that. Well, it's, yeah, it's higher than down here.
A lot.
Because the cost of transportation. Now, I've seen, I've seen people drive way out of their way to save a penny on the price of a gasoline, and, or diesel or anything, and these truckers are going to do the same thing. So what they're going to do is, they're going to look at Carson and go, well, I don't want to pay this, maybe I can get it for less in Gardenville, or I can, you know, whatever they're doing. They're going to try to circumvent it. And the other thing is, these guys that run these gas stations and supply diesel fuel, well, they're paying taxes to the county on their business. And so, this is one of these deals where we may be cutting off our nose despite our face, just to garner this, but it's going to impact these businesses around here. Now, this might give us a competitive edge because we've got a competitive price on diesel here, or maybe even less than up the road. So in, the farm equipment, they get a tax exemption, don't they, on the fuel they buy?
Yeah, it's not taxed, it's specifically exempted in this ordinance.
Yeah, so anyway.
That they enacted. Pink gas is what they call it.
Anyway, those, those are my thoughts on this, thank you.
Commissioner Nelson.
Having been involved in a gas station called Nelson &amp; Son Texaco many years ago, another issue with, like, comparing Washoe to anybody else is volume. And a lot of those gas stations up there, because there's fewer gas stations per population in Washoe than there is in Douglas County, we have a lot of gas stations for our population here, they're getting significant discounts for that volume per month from the people that produce the gasoline. So that's another reason to look at the price difference when you're, when you're looking at that.
Commissioner Rice.
It would seem to me that most of the diesel use in Douglas County comes from pick-'em-up We don't have any big truck stops here. We're not going to be losing any of their business, no matter what we do, because we don't have any place for the big, big rigs to stop and do what they do at truck stops. So it seems to me that the bulk of the diesel sold in Douglas County is going into vehicles that are larger than passenger cars, larger than SUVs, and they're harder on our roads than the other vehicles would be, and they're not paying a cent towards fixing our roads. I, for one, am tired of sitting behind detuned diesels, belching smoke so that I have to use a recirculation in my air conditioning instead of getting outside air because of the, the noxious fumes. So I'm not on an anti-diesel campaign, but I, I think that they've been getting a free ride, those that have diesel-powered vehicles, and I think that most of the people that live in this county would be willing to pass a referendum for a gas tax. Now, because of the, the folks here that have taken the no-tax pledge, I think that we ought to put the onus on the population, and that would take the onus off of those that have signed that pledge for a very needed tax increase on diesel fuel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Rice. This has been a while coming. I, I thought there was inequity when the gas tax was passed. I would support a measure going to the public, or ballot question, to see what they say. Frankly, it's not a lot of money that we would raise, 290,000, 300, probably go, you know, a little bit to our road maintenance. In fact, maybe we might even think about reducing the gas tax by a little bit if we increase the, if we approve the diesel tax. So I would be in favor of taking this on a ballot question to the, to the public, but I would support a diesel tax.
Well, as owner of a recreational vehicle that carries 103 gallons of diesel at the, the pace of consumption of about 6.2 gallons per mile, I am in favor of this. I think it was unfair, I think it was a bit disingenuous on the part of the legislature to allow us to think that when we increased the gas tax by a nickel, that we were doing it on all types of gas in a gas station. I think that was wrong, and that, and I think we got fooled. And the other, other part about this was that, at the same time, they were author, they were allowing the consideration of indexing, and they said that would be probably 35 cents per gallon. And I think Dave's point about the distribution of, of gas, you know, supply and demand, and so consequently, it has had very little impact, you know, if you could show that slide, it's had very little impact up in Washoe, where it would have a larger impact down here. But what we were concerned about when this went into effect was that gas in Douglas County would be marginally competitive with Carson City. And what has happened is that the, the Douglas County cost has gone up, and to the point where, and I'm sure all of us have done it, we go to, go to Costco, and you get the gas for six or seven cents less than at Maverick.
For 20.
20, okay, 20 cents less. But I'm in a philosophical quandary about it, because Maverick just put in 16 diesel pumps for big rigs, which I use. They, they see something in this market that we're not seeing, which is an increase in the demand for diesel, because that's a tremendous number of pumps and storage of diesel that you don't regularly see. I like what Carson City did. I, I didn't realize that they put the sunset in there. I think it's, in this particular case, it allows for us to make the decision, but to have that decision revoked without having to have people go through the petition route. And it's a two-year test to see how it works. I think for the folks that, that signed the no-tax pledge, you're giving the authority to the voter to say, hey, this is not working for me, I want this revoked. You don't like that, Dave?
Sounds like a loophole in the law, which I don't like.
Well, I, I would.
I know, I'm not saying it's the law, I'm saying that we signed a pledge not to raise any taxes, period, and that would be raising taxes even if it's two years until the voters get a chance to take that. I, I won't do that to the voters, or the people that, that support me.
Well, although I've been accused of having signed Well, although I've been accused of having signed it and reneged on it, I never did sign it, I didn't believe it, I just don't think, you don't know what's gonna come up, and this is one of the things that comes up. I respect your belief, but I didn't sign that thing. Wes?
I didn't sign it either, however, I, in my heart of hearts, do not believe that we'll get a supermajority on this board to pass the tax. That's why I'm suggesting we put it on the ballot, and put the onus on the people of this county, to direct us, yes, we want it, no, we don't want it.
Oh, I don't disagree with the people getting the final vote on it. I just thought this, in a way, I kind of agree with Dave, because I haven't seen a sunset where actually sunsetted, you know? So, you know, if the board doesn't buy into that, that's fine by me. I think it should go to the people, in some form, first or second. And I'm seeing this as a kind of a general nod, if that's the case, and the Walkers have forwarded to us, and they've been working with the Department of Taxation and the AG's office, to finalize the ballot question language for the diesel tax as required by SB 48. So, we don't have the final language for how that would look on the ballot, we'd have to wait till the DA, or the AG's office sends that out. But I think... What? Mr. District Attorney?
Chairman, thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. The county can, the county commissioners can forward their own ballot, they have to wait for, for what the state level may be doing, what Mary Walker and the AG's office is doing. This board can bring forward something to the voters.
Well, maybe we wait to see what they get, but I think what the clerk would need is to tell us the timing of, if we were to send it to the ballot, what kind of timing element are we looking at?
Thank you, I'm Chair Kathy Lewis, I'm Clerk Treasurer for the record. To give you an idea, once you guys have passed a resolution with the question and the financial impact, at that same time, you would direct myself and my office to advertise for pro and con committees, to write the pro and con for the questions. I'd come back to you with who would be on the committee, you guys would officially appoint those committees, and then they would write the pro and con statements. We are, and to give you time, I mean, we are finalizing our ballots around the beginning of September, to be able to send out ballots at the end of September for, we call them Yowakawa, they're the military and overseas voters, to give you that timing. So, by law, and I think I'm not passing this information on to the county manager who's asked, but by law, you have until July 20th, but that would be a very tight timeframe for us to get everything done by the beginning of September. What would be more comfortable would be about the beginning of May, for, to pass that resolution in the beginning of May, to give us time, and the pro and con committees time to write their, their pro or con statement, plus their rebuttal. So, around the beginning, that first meeting in May would be ideal timing for our office.
So, backing that up, we would need a resolution if we decided to go forward, to present it on a ballot in April? And that would, and that resolution would have the type of language necessary to get it on the ballot, and the financial impact?
I think you could approve that resolution at that first meeting in May, too, so you'd have, tell that first meeting in May, would be good.
Okay, so, then, what we should probably do is give the county manager direction to come back in May, if we agree to that. I think we need to have a formal vote on sending it to the electorate, so that at least they know that we're, that's what we're looking to do. Yeah, yeah, I'll take public comment, but we don't have a ballot issue. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. District Attorney, would it be possible for us to pass a resolution today, requesting that this issue be put on the ballot, pending language to be supplied at a later date? That way, the newspapers would be able to say, guess what, folks, they're talking about it, and that would give our legal eagles time to put together a draft form.
Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Doug Ritchie, Deputy District Attorney. I don't think we could do a resolution, I don't think this board could draft a resolution with the way the agenda's drafted today, but clearly, the board can provide direction, and a resolution can be brought forward at the next meeting at the lake, or at the next valley meeting, for the board's consideration and adoption, that, based on whether of feedback or direction the board gives, today or at a later date.
All right, so you're just looking for direction today?
Yes, please.
So, anybody wanna take a stab at the direction? I thought your proposed motion was pretty good. Yeah, yeah, oh, well.
There's something floating around out of Clark County, where the unions and the school districts want to raise the sales tax in the state, something like 2%. So, this, if this is passed by the bubbleheads in Carson, this is going to increase the cost of gasoline, and if this is instituted, it's gonna make the cost of a gallon of gasoline, or diesel, even more expensive.
Well, if they're passing the sales tax, that's not gonna have any impact on our gas tax, because they'll raise the sales tax itself.
I think his point is there's sales tax on gasoline.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Which, in fact, raises the whole price. That's a good point. But, you know, on the other hand, they're gonna do what they gotta do, and we gotta do what we gotta do. Well, that's, would speak then to, you know, letting it sunset in two years, wouldn't it?
Commissioner, if I may?
Sure. Mr. Ricker?
I brought back up this slide, because, and I wanted to comment on some of the board discussion here, and especially with Commissioner Angles had mentioned about volume, price of gas, et cetera, and the fluctuations there. So, on this chart, I wanted to specifically point out Lyon County and Washoe, the two bottom lines here. If you look at their fuel sales, I'll specifically deal with the diesel side of it, diesel fuel sales in Washoe County, and diesel fuel sales in Lyon County are about the same, it's somewhere around 57 million gallons of diesel that's, that's sold up in that area. What is surprising, and this is where I, this is where I was going with the, kind of the, what NACO had said, with the Nevada Association of Counties, as well as just what the statistics would prove, or would sort of point to, is that its market force, the price of gas, and the price of diesel, especially in that corridor, and I point out those two, and those two, Fernley and Sparks, because that's the transportation corridor along Highway 80. If you look at that, there's no downturn, or there's no reduction in the volume of fuel, diesel fuel sold in Fernley, and yet, they have zero county tax on their gas, on their diesel, compared to 37 cents in Washoe, and yet, there's an inverse relationship in terms of the cost of fuel. It's purely a market-driven thing. They've got Tesla, they've got the Parkway up there, and as a result, they can charge what they want to, I mean, they can charge, independent of their fuel tax. They're getting a good market rate. If you look at Douglas County and Carson, I mean, I think if you look at it that way, with Carson enacting a fine-sent tax, and if you look at what's happening in Douglas County, your comment about Douglas County on the gasoline side, yeah, we both, Douglas and Carson both have the same fuel pricing, or the fuel taxing rates, discrepancy in pricing, principally probably because of Costco, and because they've driven the cost, and Costco has regionally dropped the price of gas in the Carson City area, which hasn't really impacted down here in Douglas. I mean, those who want to drive up there, fine, but if you're not in that area, you're not influenced by it. So, the influence of Carson City's diesel pricing, I mean, I think what Carson recognized, and why they put the ordinance in with the sunset, was they recognized that the diesel cost in their area is going to fluctuate with what's, what's happening in the greater market, so you could almost predict here that if Carson is able to raise their price of diesel, the gas stations in Douglas will follow suit, independent of whether you've taxed it or not.
Right. Yeah, because we don't control price, we don't even control the supply. What affects it is the volume, and I think Dave verified that particular issue. But, if anything, that, to me, says that we need to do what we need to do, because we were looking at adopting an increase in the, in the gas tax, and the gas went down. The price of gas went down. We adopted the gas tax, and the price of gas continued down in Carson, but it stayed the same in Douglas, and we don't have any control over that particular issue. But, what we did gain out of that, is we gained 15 million, 13 million dollars in roads, and we did some road repairs that were absolutely necessary. And we could do more of that. We, when I was first in office, we were, we had a total road budget of $800,000. Now, we have $3 million in cash in the Road Operating Fund, and $7 million in the RTC Fund. And one of the things that everybody hits us up about, in every county, I don't care if it's Douglas or Lincoln, is that the county's responsible for the roads. And one of the things that we continually look at is, how do we get that money to them? We've taken a million dollars in cash out of the general fund, and put it in the road fund. You know, if we could supplement that with the gas tax, I think, which, in my view, this is a question of fairness, and I think that it is, it's not fair, the way we're doing it. And what, what amazes me is that the gas at the end of town, where the tribe is selling it, the diesel down there, is always much more expensive than anywhere, but you see trucks in there all the time. And part of that is ease and access onto and out, off of 395, and they're the first station, you know, so it's a location, too. Commissioner Rice?
For those that have been around for a while, I found it very interesting, when Carson City raised their gas tax by 5 cents, and we did not, our gas went up the same 5 cents.
Right.
Guess who got profit from that? It wasn't us.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with them making a profit, you know, but I do think that we ought to get in on it. Commissioner Angles?
This is just an anecdotal observation, but the big rigs coming through here, I don't think they're fueling up here. These guys are pretty savvy. So, we aren't gonna get anything, most of the diesel appears to be RVs, and diesel trucks, that are either tourists coming through here, or locals that have diesel trucks. So, they're the ones that are going to be impacted by this tax. Thank you.
Well, I think the other group that's gonna be impacted is construction, because almost all the contractors are driving diesels, big diesels, you know? And they're gonna pass that on. Commissioner Nelson?
I appreciate a good debate, but I think Commissioner Rice has it correctly, we're not gonna get a 2/3 or 3/4 vote on this board, so, thanks for the sales job, and keep pushing, but not gonna work.
All right, what, so, can we say that we're not gonna vote for a tax, independent of a vote? By the commit, so then the direction that we want to give the county manager is come back with a resolution that we can look at for a ballot issue?
Yes.
And bring it back? Yes, I'll get public comment, and bring it back before me. Well, this is not a vote, so I can call for public comment at any point. True enough? Okay, unless anybody, here it is. Okay, so, we'll open it for public comment. Any public comment on this issue? Sir, if you want to make a comment, and I appreciate your comment, but you gotta step up to the mic. I also appreciate your service and career.
I think some things are constant, the county's always gonna need more money, it's just the way it is, costs go up. Philosophically, I just believe tax increases should be done with the consent of the people. If the people decide that fairness is a key issue, and it's a valid point, then I think that point could be made. I think the timeliness, you could put this on the ballot for November, so it's not like it's a long period of time. So, I would urge you to let the people make this decision. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
I agree with this gentleman.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, did we provide direction? All right. Any further comment from the board? All right, then we'll move on. Thank you all for commenting, and we'll move on to item number six, is that right? For possible action, discussion on one appointment to Douglas County Board of Equalization by the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the four-year term of office from February 2020 through December 23. Mr. Cates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'll recall for the board that in December, we did appointments to boards and commissions. During that time, there were two appointments to be made to the Board of Equalizations, there was only one applicant, Elaine Pace, who was reappointed to the board, and we did not have sufficient applicants for you to consider another person, leaving one vacancy on the Board of Equalization. My office solicited applications from additional individuals to be considered, and we received two applications, one is from Tim Miller, and the other is from Beverly Anderson. According to Statute NRS 361.340, the chairman of the board makes a recommendation to the commission for consideration for appointment, and the chairman has recommended Mr. Miller.
Do we have any of the applicants here?
We have both. Would either one or both of you like to make a statement?
As part of my resume, when I sent it in, being I'm retired for 20 years now, I forgot a couple of items, or one item for sure, and Barry is well aware of this item, is I owned Sunflower Learning Center, which was a daycare center, and I had it for, well, I worked there starting in 2010, and then I wound up selling it in 2016, but, and I took it from a place where it had nothing, where I had to put my own money into it to get it to be a very successful business, so, I forgot to put that on my resume. So I forgot to put that on my resume, and I feel I would be an asset to this Board of Equalization because I have real estate experience also. I was a realtor in California for 12 years while I worked full-time at Lockheed. Thank you.
I did ask her what one of her best days was, and may I share that? I asked you one, one question. What was one of your best days? And can I repeat your answer to me?
My best days?
One of your, one-
Pardon?
I asked you, what was one of your best days when we were in the church? And, and you said, "The day I sold it."
No, not really. I, it took a lot of work, and I took it from, like I say, I put my own money into it to get it because the previous owners didn't have the money and I put it in to keep it alive. And then I built it up where it was very successful when I sold it. So, no, not the day I quit, not the day I sold it. It was fun.
All right.
Good afternoon, I'm Tim Miller. I've applied for this position, which I feel is a community-driven position that as a community citizen, that is an honor to serve on a committee like this. I've been in this valley, you could say roughly about 50 years. I've been involved in just about everything in this valley that is orientated around youth. As a lady said, I have had business backgrounds. I've worked for the federal government. I was also retired military for 35 years. So obviously, I've been involved in community awareness and business. So other than that, I can't touch, tell you too much more about me. So I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Bring it back to the board, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Rice.
I noticed on your resume that you have both a California and Nevada post.
Yes, right.
What, just, seeing as how I have a, sort of a law enforcement background, I'm curious to see what your background is.
Excuse me?
I'm curious to see what your law enforcement background is.
I started out in 1972 with, started out over in Yarrington on the police department. In '76, I went to Nevada post. '78, I went to continuation secondary post. '79, I took myself away from law enforcement in Yarrington because I wanted to further advance. I went down to California, went through Silver State Post Academy, which is one of the biggest ones in California. It's also 18 months. It's not a three-week course. I finalized that. I came back, went to work for Esmeralda County Sheriff's Department, went from there to Nye, and then went up, up here in this area. I continued to service in the law enforcement area as both probation officer here in this county, and I also worked for Washoe Tribe. Then I left there, I went to work for the United States Army, and I was the, let me get my head going here. I worked for the Drug Task Force, what they called the Interdiction Drug Task Force, and I worked in NDI at that time, and I finished up my nine and a half years there, which gave me a total of 32 years in law enforcement, 35 years in, in Army. And at that period of time, I also owned three antique stores, two here in Douglas and one in Reno. That was a hobby. So other than that, in my youth groups, I believe even the clerk treasurer can tell you that I've been involved in every youth group in this valley, including Douglas High School. I sit on the board, I was a president. I also worked the announcer stands for years. So I pretty much put in a lot of time in this community, and that's why I want to sit on the taxation board.
Thank you. Further comments? I did my job according to the NRS, in your recommendation. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I would move to approve the appointment of Viv Anderson to the Douglas County Board of Equalization for the remainder of a four-year term of office from February 2020 through December 2023.
Fails for lack of a second. Doesn't happen often. All right, do we have any, any other motions?
I, the one reason I, I, they're both good candidates. Mr. Miller, I mean, Board of Equalization is really conflict resolution, okay? And, and I think his background lends more to that particular area than, than Ms. Anderson. So I would move to approve the appointment of Tim Miller to the Douglas County Board of Equalization for the remainder of the four-year term of office from February 2020 through December 2023.
We have a motion from Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries 5-0. I would also ask Ms. Anderson to keep her application current in the event that we run out of folks that, so that we can, because we had a tough time filling this position. So I want to thank her for also, for applying. And congratulations, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
We'll see if you say that after your first couple of board meetings. All right. So we move on to number seven, reports and/or updates. For presentation only, reports and updates from county commission members concerning various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of, a liaison to, or meetings functions they have attended. I will start with Commissioner Engels.
This is just an item of interest, but it's interesting. The Arts Council is in the old Cooper Lumber Building down there, and they've got a mortgage on it and they're barely scratching by. Well, it was bought out by this guy, Big George. It's a, wants to do the development of North County. That was pretty recent.
Right.
So just a matter of interest.
So they could stay there longer? I thought that was... Commissioner Rice.
At the TRPA, they have a bit of a quandary in that in California, they have passed a law, or several of them. They have a tendency to do that over there quite frequently since they have nothing better to do. That was Snide, wasn't it? Anyway, they have passed a law saying that without zoning change, you can put a second residential unit on your lot regardless of size. This is creating a problem with the RPA because they allow secondary houses only if you have a lot that's an acre or better. So they're, it's being confounded and they're trying to come up with language that will satisfy the California law without violating the TRPA rules. And no, this does not, this will not impact Nevada unless our legislature further turns us into California. So that's, it's going to be interesting to see how that's resolved. End of report.
Commissioner Nelson?
Nothing to report this time.
Commissioner Walsh?
I have nothing to report, just want to remind everybody that tonight are the Republican precinct meetings, so please do not forget to attend your precinct meeting. A lot of them are being held at the community center, but by now, you should have known where your precinct meeting is going to be held.
And they all start at 7:00 PM. And then there's a reminder that our next meeting is the 25th of February and then the 27th. No, we have, we have a joint meeting with the Audit Committee. So, and I'm sure everybody read the reports back, the one from the Audit Committee was there too. All right. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything? Mr. District Attorney? Okay. Then I'll call for final public comment.
James McCullough for the record. I have a question. I was going to make a public comment in regard to the Board of Equalization. I'm on the Board of Equalization, and that wasn't asked for, and I'm not sure why. Is there something different in that action item that doesn't require a public comment?
No, I missed it. I apologize.
I did want to, as a member of the board, I did want to make some comment on that, but you've already done it, so, and I thank you for reminding people about the precinct meetings. And for those of you meeting at the senior center, I will see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Turner. Sustainable by Tom DeWes, very well-known. If you notice this picture here, it's a ball and chain with high-rise buildings all over it. That's where we're coming to. Conspirators' hierarchy, the story of the Committee of 300. If you notice, it's the earth with a chain circling around it. That's what's contained in this book. You gentlemen are letting the international come into our country. I want you to know that there is an inner core and a group above this level that are the most evil people imaginable, and you don't mean anything to them. And you're allowing those monsters from Europe to get their foot in the door to take our country down. By having these corporations, guys as governments, take grants with strings attached to control. Don't do the requirements of the strings, get sued and lose. That's what's desired. There are several planning organizations like United Nations sanctioned, non-governmental organization, the American Planning Association, which pushes United Nations Agenda 21, Agenda 2030, Reorganization of World Societies Program. When we elect our mayors, city councils, county commissions, legislators and governors, the layers of hidden governments send our elected representatives to indoctrination centers, private organizations, 501(c)(3) (c)(4)'s, false nonprofits such as Centralized U.S. Conference of Mayors, National Association of Counties, the National League of Cities, the National Council of State Legislatures, the Council of State Governments, and the National Governors Association. These are all United Nations centralized private organizations, corporations, using the United Nations Charter written by Stephen Rockefeller, USA fascism, Communist more strong, Canada socialism, Miguel Gorbachev, Russia, socialism and communism as a guideline for policy, training and decisions. Remember the Russian comment or saying, "Peace until the guard's down." Constitution Article 1, Section 10, Article 3, Section 3, Article 6, Paragraph 2, treason. These are all 501(c)(3) organizations with governmental officials, corporate officials. This is where our newly-elected private government officials are sent to be indoctrinated in unconstitutional socialism, communism and fascism voluntarily. Thank you.
Thank you.
To be continued in the next public comment.
Okay, fine. All right. Anything further from the commissioners? I, I do apologize to, for not calling for public comment. There's nothing I can do about it now. And with that, I say we're adjourned.